We're recording.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the, what's it, June 11th, 2025 planning commission meeting reporter. Carla, would you please take the roll step forward?
Watkins.
I didn't see your show from Zoom yet.
Watkins, here, with Meyer.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
We have a forum.
Do a forum, okay. First up on the agenda is announcements, and Kim handed me this Volunteers Needed flyer. There's a few more in the thing over on the wall there for City of Depot Bay open positions. There's a planning commission right here if you want to join in. We've got a few spots open for, or one spot open for planning commission. We've got five spots open for the Energy Advisory Committee, which I think is a newish one.
Grandity committee.
Grandity committee. Three spots open for city and urban renewal budget committees and one opening on the Sam Enhancement Commission. So if you're interested in participating, there's a flyer right over there that'll hold a city hall.
I have one more announcement if you have one chair.
Please.
I just want to let, because I love it when I'm in a meeting and there's an audience. Next, on the 27th at City Park is our second annual Pepalooza. That we do games. If you have dogs and you have pets, we even had a buddy last year. So come to the Pepalooza and we're gonna have musical chairs this year. It's actually a musical placemat, but we treat it just like that. So come on down.
It sounds like it'll be man.
It is, but it's so much fun. So many little dogs.
Oh, the little dogs?
Little dogs, big dogs, me and the dog. And a bunch.
I got a little dog.
Good.
Okay, do we have any prior meeting minutes to review at this time?
No.
Okay. We can move on from that and we will get right down to business. We have a public hearing. Case file number one dash V A R dash P C dash 25 applicant Krista Holmes. And before we do that, I've got my little spiel to read for a quasi judicial public hearing. The following statement will apply to all public hearings heard at tonight's meeting. The testimony and evidence must be directed toward the code section citations and criteria described by the City Depot Bay Staff Report or other criteria in the code party believes to apply to the subject request. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the State Land use Board of Appeals on that issue. Application materials and other evidence relied upon by the applicant have been provided to the city and have been made available to the public. The procedures for the public hearings will be as follows, and we will try to stick to this strictly. A, there will be a staff report. B, the applicant will present testimony. C, there will be testimony from those in favor of the application. D, there will be testimony from those in opposition to the application. E, there will be rebuttal from the applicant. F, I will then ask if there is anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony. G, if none, the public hearing will be closed. And H, the commission will deliberate and make a decision. There will be no further input from the public during deliberations. Are there any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias of commissioners regarding the hearings before us? Who's Scott?
So I went specifically by the site to look at the, the on-street parking situation.
Okay. Thank you for disclosing that. Is there any opposition to any member on the commission hearing this case by commissioners or the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, hearing done. I believe we can proceed with the staff report if you would, please.
Chair, good evening, commissioners, everyone. The request is to allow variance to the off-street parking standards of the Depot Bay zoning ordinance and a change in use for an existing building in the retail commercial C1 zone. Both uses mixed retail and residential consisting of a craft shop on the ground level and a dwelling on the second level. Subject property does not have any off-street parking, as the site is entirely devoted to structural development and no land area remains available on-site. The extended building site coverage is suitable in figure one of the staff report. There are ten existing on-street parking spaces located in the property's frontage on US Highway 101. These are all delineated with parking curb stops and painted striped. The applicant's current parking space requirement is eight spaces. The planning commission may approve variance when it has demonstrated that there are extraordinary or unique circumstances applicable to this subject property and the variance is necessary to preserve the applicant's property rights as similar to those of other businesses or property owners in the vicinity, as well as binding, maybe positive finding of facts relative to the other decision criteria which we will discuss. Staff report lists a number of relevant facts, page 212. I will go over all those. Item 10, no notice that the application was published in a newspaper for local circulation, mailed to property owners within 250 feet of the subject property, and also forwarded to interested agencies. No comments were received as of the time of the staff report writing except that Oregon Department of Transportation responded with no concerns. That response is attached. Late this afternoon, the city did receive additional written testimony, which was provided in your package and was brought to the attention of the applicant. According to land use history, it's noted that a very similar prior parking variance was approved by the planning commission for the site in 2006. Walport Seafood Company required ten spaces and was approved to use the existing highway frontage parking spaces to meet later demand. That decision required reevaluation by the planning commission of a new application for variance five years following initial approval. The company closed prior to that time and the property has been effectively vacant and idle for many years. Staff's knowledge, anyway. Staff's analysis for the Walport Seafood Company application included the findings stating, quote, "The existing structure and property has a history of operating as a commercial structure. Based on review of the 1986 building permit, the property has never had any off-street parking." County records reveal that the building was constructed in 1928 and the property survey also predates the city's adoption of zoning laws, which was in 1976, dating back to at least the earliest survey found on the county's online database, 1946. The staff report then lists the relevant criteria from the 2022 Depot Bay zoning ordinance and the 2011 Depot Bay zoning ordinance and provides a description once again of why we're looking at two ordinances, kind of mix-up that occurred with respect to the current qualified zoning ordinance. The report explains that certain provisions of the 2022 zoning ordinance are inaccurate and not reflective of what was adopted by the city council. So select sections of the formal code of the 2011 zoning ordinance must get by in that place. My name is in the staff report, calling the details of the applicant's proposal to the appropriate applicable provisions of the 2022 and 2011 Depot Bay zoning ordinances. The proposed retail residential uses are permitted outright in the C1 zone. There is no structural development proposed, no expansion of the building's footprint or increase in its height. Section 152.031 provides development standards for C1 zone. Subsection J3G is pertinent and it states parking areas or parking spaces shall not be placed in front of a building on materials, Highway 101, other than the public parking spaces provided within the public right. So the applicant seeks variance to utilize the ten existing parking spaces located in front of the building on US Highway 101 right of way. This is supported by precedents and adopted community master plans. The record for the prior approved variance to this location includes the following findings. The Depot Bay Downtown Economy Plan recommends that parking wa, excuse me, that parking for commercial establishments on the east side of the highway, just south of the bridge, be provided on-street along the frontage of the buildings. One of the highest priorities expressed by the community is the need to revitalize the commercial areas south of the bridge. This is an opportunity to provide a viable commercial establishment south of the bridge. It goes on to say, "There are several retail establishments in the Depot Bay Commercial Zone that rely on the highway, off-street parking, located in front of businesses." Staff finds that the conclusions described above, or excuse me, the conditions described above in 2006 have not significantly changed and that granting the variance would be consistent with community objectives and the Depot Bay Downtown Economy Plan. Code provides off-street parking in the C-zone, C1 zone, excuse me, may be provided off-site if located within 500 minimum feet of the subject property. The applicant exercised due diligence and senior options for dedicated off-site parking within 500 feet as described in the applicant's supplemental narrative attached to the staff report. This will be discussed in more detail under the following discussion with the co-circumstances for granting variance. I moved down to roughly the middle of page seven of the staff report. The applicant shared in oral communication with staff that they intend to utilize a personal truck for deliveries and company-related activities. In the event of approval of the variance, recommended condition of approval would prohibit parking a truck in the site's highway frontage. This is consistent with section 152.058 sub E, which is quoted in the staff report, page seven. Page 77 and possibly the top of your paper, I'm not sure. But over is a table, table indicates the cumulative parking requirement for the mixed uses on-site is eight spaces. The ten spaces in subject property's highway frontage exceeds the minimum number of spaces required. The ten existing spaces are a post-public parking spaces. The recommended condition of approval stipulates that no signs may be placed that reserve the parking spaces for a specific business or property. The structure is non-conforming due to off-planting the entire site, leaving no land area for off-street parking. A lot of our structure's non-conforming status is not subject to expiration if the property is vacant for a period of one year or more, as is the case for non-conforming use. Non-conforming structures, though, must comply with the zoning code when a change in use occurs. Variance approval is sought to establish this consistency with the code, which allows for variances when unusual circumstances occur to subject property and the decision criteria can be met. 152.170, popularization to grant or deny variances. Says the planning commission may authorize variances from the requirements of this chapter where it could be shown that owing to special and unusual circumstances related to a specific piece of property, strict application of the ordinance would cause undue or unnecessary hardship. Session 152.170 provides circumstances for granting the variance, otherwise referred to as the decision criterion for variance. The first one requires finding that exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property which do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity and may result from lot size or shape legally existing prior to living in this ordinance or other circumstances over which the applicant has no control. The staff report contains the applicant's response to this criterion and also staff's analysis. Staff's analysis states, I guess, in bold, "The subject property's size and shape, coupled with the extent of structural development, conclude providing off-street parking as no land areas available for this purpose. While common among some properties in the vicinity, this does constitute an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance, which is not, does not apply generally to other properties in the retail commercial C1 zone. The property configuration and structural development preceded the city's adoption of zoning code standards in April of 1976." Second criterion, the variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right of the applicant substantially the same as owners of other property in the same zone or vicinity possess. Proportion of the applicant's response means adjacent commercial properties south of the Depot Bay Bridge on the east side of the street share the same restrictions. Staff's analysis states in part, "Approval of the variance would be consistent with the planning commission's prior variance approvals for businesses who also rely on highway frontage parking to meet their parking demands, including the prior variance approval for a previous owner and applicant of subject property to permit utilizing highway right-of-way parking." That was case number one V P C 06. The record of that decision included the statement from the applicant, Walport Seafood Company. "There are several retail establishments in the Depot Bay Commercial Zone that rely on the highway off-street parking located in front of businesses. We are asking for the same opportunity." The planning commission also approved highway and public street parking for another commercial business, Hidden Trip, in 2017. That parcel was fully developed and had no space for on-site or off-street parking. It is noted that without variance approval, no economic or other use of a subject property would be possible. The variance is necessary to preserve the property right of the applicant substantially the same as the property's previous owners and owners of other property in the same zone or vicinity. Third criterion, the variance would not be material detrimental to the purposes of this ordinance or to property in the zone or vicinity nearest the property's locator, but otherwise conflict with the objectives and the city plan or policy." The applicant responds and then staff's analysis includes the following. "Approval would be consistent with parking arrangements that have been previously allowed for other businesses running on the highway which have no or in-and-of-the-space for on-site or off-street parking, including other businesses located south of the bridge and on the east side of US Highway 101. The applicant's exceptional circumstances were pre-existing conditions at the time of adoption of the Depot Bay zoning ordinance. The ordinance allows for grants approval under such exceptional orders to ordinary circumstances. For these reasons, approval of the applicant's request would not be detrimental to the purpose of the zoning ordinance and also will not conflict with the objectives of the zoning ordinance or other city plan or policies." The fourth criterion requires a finding that the hardship is not self-imposed and the variance requested is the minimum variance which would alleviate the hardship. The applicant responds, "The hardship is a circumstance of changing building code over time. The buildings built in these lots were clearly constructed to face Highway 101 on very little valuable land, leveraging filings to bring a lot to strip out." Staff's analysis notes, "The applicant was not the property owner when the subject property was created in its current configuration or building it constructed. The applicant purchased the property in 2025. Based on these facts, the hardship described under criterion A is not self-imposed by the applicant." And a typical section of the 2011 zoning ordinance, ordinance 24, provides that in the C1 zone, required off-street parking may be located on a separate property located within 500 minimum feet of the subject property. However, the applicant's supplemental narrative attached to this decision indicates that no such options appear currently available. The applicant's documented investigations revealed that no private parking within 500 feet of the site is available to accommodate the off-street parking requirement, provides some detailed environmental research. The applicant's supplemental narrative, which is attached to the staff report, states, "The search for suitable commercial real estate parking within a 500-foot radius of C Street has presented significant challenges to the geographic constraints of current availability of property." And she lists some specifics on page 11 and 12, and sums by saying, "This information indicates a lack of viable options for commercial parking development within the immediate 500-foot radius of C Street." The applicant's mixed retail residential use requires a total of eight parking spaces while ten spaces are available in the highway right-of-way. Without the variance, no economic or other use could be made at the subject property. The requested variance is a minimum variance that would alleviate the identified hardship." Final criterion means hardship asserted as a basis for the variance does not arise from a violation of the zoning ordinance. Staff's analysis, "The identified hardship results from the property's size and configuration and extent of existing structural development. These circumstances predate the city's zoning code standards and do not arise from a violation of the ordinance." In the conclusion, "In the event the planning commission approves the requested variance, staff suggests the adoption of four conditions of approval." I'll go ahead and read those into the record. Number one, this variance approval looks expired if the applicant's craft store business has discontinued on the subject property for a period of one year or more. Number two, any change in use over those described in the current record requires prior city approval and evaluation against all standards and requirements of the Depot Bay zoning ordinance as applicable. Number three, required parking spaces shall be available for parking of operable passenger automobiles, residents, customers, patrons, and employees only and shall not be used for storage of vehicles or materials or for parking of trucks used in conducting the business use." Incidentally, that's the specific wording of the section of code that I decided to use, straight out of code. And number four, the ten existing parking spaces in front of the property and are located within Highway 101 right-of-way are public parking spaces. No signs may be placed to reserve the parking spaces for a specific business use or property. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions specific regarding the staff report from commissioners?
So the on-street parking spaces, I probably need to count right, but I didn't count 10, so. But I don't see like a picture of it or a map that was right.
The applicant provided an area with some rough lines drawn that depicted eight spaces, but I went and conducted a site inspection and saw 10 delineated spaces in her frontage.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I wonder who, since that's on-street parking, that means it's, what does that mean? Does this mean it's?
It's owned by ODOT. It's in the public right-of-way. But ODOT is aware of the longstanding use of highway parking in a number of locations in town. And as I mentioned, ODOT was notified of this application and wrote email back saying they had no concerns about new business being located there. That's pretty much it all.
So does ODOT maintain those spots? Like if they needed to be restripped or something, does ODOT do that?
By, not to my knowledge.
Okay, so if that needed to be done, the property owner would likely do it.
And whoever does it would need to get a permit from ODOT.
And say that again?
Whoever did it, whether, yeah, would need to get a permit from ODOT.
Anybody who did alterations on the street.
Any work in the right-of-way requires approval.
Yes. And my last question is, this stipulation or condition, I think, is that a delivery truck not, or other types of vehicles not be parked in that, that area? So, I mean, they can park to deliver, use it temporarily, right?
Yeah, but not park there to be stored there, definitely.
Oh, not to be stored.
And claim in the space all the time.
I've got one, looks like we've got our fourth commissioner on.
Yes, I was gonna tell you, Commissioner Watkins is there.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm running a little bit late.
Okay, we're currently in the middle of the public hearing, so hope you're early caught up.
Yeah.
I got one question on the condition number four, and this might just be for my own experience, but it's, if the ten existing parking spaces in front of the property and are located within the Highway 101 right-of-way are public parking spaces, no signs may be placed to reserve the parking spaces for a specific business use or property. I understand that. My only question is, does that include any, like, ADA designated spaces that are anywhere of?
There are, I don't know if that's even, one or two businesses south of the bridge on this side of the highway that have already marked, but have some form of ADA spaces.
Okay.
And if the ADA space were built at this site, it too would not be able to be designated specifically for this business.
Okay, just a general purpose public ADA spot. Okay. Any other, you got any questions for the staff report? Chris, do you have any questions regarding the, you got your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just had a couple, and I was quite unsure. So it's not eight spaces, it's 10 spaces, is that correct?
Ten spaces are, are present, eight are required.
Okay, okay. And I can't remember for sure, but is that a combination of paved right now and gravel?
They're all hard surface with some gravel on top, in some places.
Right, right.
Dust and gravel, but they're, they're, they're hard surface and paved.
Will the applicant need to, ODOT to improve the space, you know, to, if it was paved or if it was striped or anything like that? Is that their first line of getting a permit for that is with ODOT? Or is that coming back to the city for that?
The applicant would have to go directly to ODOT to get permission to do anything there. So you wouldn't have a permit per se for that.
Okay, and we're not seeing any issues of backing out on a 101? I mean, I know just from parking in that general area, it can be, you know, there's quite a bit of traffic at times.
Well, the owner of the highway didn't express concerns about it. It's a longstanding historical condition.
I know, yeah.
And I guess that's all I can say about it.
Okay, all right. I just wonder if there had to be modifications at this present time? I do remember when it was the Fish Company and, you know, kind of.
I don't, I don't know what modifications can be made to avoid backing from the highway. The downtown refinement plan, I guess, if and when it were implemented, I understand, calls for parallel parking along the highway on this side for the length from the bridge, I think, all the way to Sheddell Avenue here. So that would increase the amount of parking available in whole on that stretch of the highway. It would reduce the number of spaces fronting on the subject property to about four. And if the downtown refinement plan is ever implemented, that's the ultimate vision of the community, at least it was when it was adopted, and of ODOT as well.
That's the ODOT.
They want to see.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners from the staff report? Hearing done. If the applicant is present, it is time if you'd like to present testimony.
Hi.
Hi. Would you like to speak on, on your application?
Just, hi, I'm Krista.
If, if you would, please step up and sign in.
She's taking me in the address, better, just sign in.
I just.
Yeah, name, address, this is what you do.
We don't say. We're not necessarily on the street.
Hello, just want to say hi. I'm Renee Weaver, a business owner. I live above the shop. So I've seen a lot of it now and all my testimony is printed in your packet. If you have any questions, I'm absolutely available. If you have any questions, I am absolutely available, um, to take them, but otherwise, I have plenty additional to add.
Any questions for the applicant?
So as far as the number of parking spaces, if you're running the craft shop, do you feel like currently there is adequate parking spaces for people, safe spaces? It's a good question.
Um, I have been involved with the property since January, and from January to now, which is what, about six months, not quite, um, it is usually extremely vacant in front of the building. Um, with my use case, I think it will be, uh, busy when we're running craft workshops in the evenings, which currently it's, it's pretty vacant on the south side of the bridge. So I think there's more than enough public parking there to conduct the business. And then on a normal basis, the business is retail, so it's in and out. So it's not like in a restaurant, you have people come and stay for an hour or two. In my retail shop, I'm gonna come get what they need and leave. So it should be pretty, um, fluid. And it won't attract, well, it will attract, um, customers from Lincoln City, from Newport, um, into the town, but they won't be specifically seasonal, so it'll provide more, um, more business for the city. You know, seasonally typically, there's, you know, just tourists in here. So I think it'll be good for the southern bridge businesses.
You got any questions for the applicant?
Not for the applicant.
I got, yeah, one more last question. So, if you were to have an opportunity to purchase private property for the date of off-street parking, is that, do you perceive that as a undue burden on your business? Because it would cost, it would cost money to do that.
Right. Well, it's a good question. So according to the public code, which I referenced for purchasing the property, the publicly available information says that I can use-
I gotta jump in real quick.
So, so that's your basic analysis on it.
Mike, I'm sorry, might be, uh, Scott expressed some concerns a bit with the question asked, he might be seeking-
Well, no, I did.
... deliberations.
My, my concern with the requirement actually in the zoning law itself, um, now, and I don't know when to bring that up. Is that the appropriate, or deliberations?
It could be, I think, yeah, deliberations might be the best.
That's what I'm thinking, okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, Chris. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it was-
Did I?
It wasn't anything happened to you, no?
Is there an okay question for me?
An okay question? Yeah, I think so.
I mean, related to the variance requirements.
Sorry.
Does that, does that make sense what I'm asking?
Let me, yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what I think and then you can make your response of it. Um, so when I was looking at the property to purchase, I referenced the Public City Code on the website, which states that I can use the eight spots in front of, or ten spots in front of the store as parking for the store. Um, I've since been informed by Mr. Ecker that that public code is incorrectly stated, so, um, I based my significant investment based on that information, so I, I did not expect to have to do any of this, actually.
I've got one question, I don't know if you've had the opportunity, it looks like the date on there, have you had the opportunity to read the objection letter that was submitted regarding the variance? It was just submitted today.
Obviously, it was submitted by NACO.
Okay, you haven't had a chance to review it?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you did, okay. You have any, there, there's some statements in there regarding the due diligence to look for appropriate, you know, parking in, within a 500-foot radius. And just wanna see what your thoughts are, and, um, how far did you go to look into that?
Yeah, I, I-
To respond to that?
I read the, the assumption, which is incorrect. Um, so I have two dogs, and I walk home every day. I have walked, um, the 500 feet around the building. What is that now? What, hundreds of times? Um, so I have looked consistently for signage or advertising that people are looking to rent or sell land, and I've never seen any in the six months I've been here. In addition to which, I have my Realtor who, which helped me to, um, Realtor who helped me to get this property, I had her do research as well, and she also did not come back with anything. That was for sale lease, um, we didn't have that at the beginning.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Um, next is, are there any, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Come on up. You sign in, take your name.
Hi, my name is Lori Reeves, I am the owner of Hippie Trip and also the building. Um, I was granted the same variance in 2017. Um, when we purchased the building, same situation, there was no parking, there were places to purchase. Uh, my building is also built property line to property line with no, no room. Um, you know, it was really kind of, when, when we were doing this and we were reading the rules, you know, it just kind of felt like there's no room for development on the south side of the bridge with buildings that are already existing. I, I understand that if I were building, or if the applicant was building something new and it was a brand-new structure, then yes, off-street parking should be provided, but for the existing buildings that have already been there, that the use is the same as it's always been, us trying to find parking within 500 feet would have been, we wouldn't have been able to do it, and no business would have ever been able to go in there, um, or would have to tear down half of our building to provide parking, which seems like a really undue burden. Um, but I fully support the applicant, um, coming in, we need businesses on the south side of the bridge. Um, we all are using the same parking down there. Um, you know, I, I feel that that side of the road, the, the east side, they do have a little bit more of advantage because you have the whale museum, you have the Thai restaurant, you have whale bites. And during the summer months, we notice, and I've been here for eight years, um, nobody really parks on that side of the street because they automatically assume that it is business parking, even though there are no signs posted, there's no nothing. During the crazy busy summer months, that side of the street sits vacant most of the time. And so I, I'm actually encouraging a business to be there so more people will park. I mean, it's beneficial for me because if more people are seeing parking that they actually feel that they can park in, then, you know, it brings business to me, to Mazatlan. We're all in that same little niche right there, so I, I've always loved this.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I ask her a question? Sure, of course. So have you found that the on-street parking is adequate for your business?
Absolutely, my, my customers, they, um, you know, much like the, the craft store that is coming in here, you know, my customers are in and out, you know, five minutes, it's rotating. I mean, the, the problem that we do face, um, is, you know, if there is no parking and, you know, it's full, which sometimes a lot during the summer months it is, you know, we, we lose that business by default because people keep driving and they're like, well, there's nowhere to park. We can't really turn and go around the block because of the one-way street issue on Ellingson and Coast, so people can't get back to us if they want to. Um, but usually by three o'clock, 3:30 in the afternoon, when even in peak tourist months, the tourists are gone here, because it's like we've had lunch, we spent the time in Depot Bay, and about 3:30, parking eases up, and that's when we're the busiest. And, you know, my business is also not seasonal, um, we're here year-round. I have a very good local following, and, you know, my locals, you know, they, they understand when they can come and when to stay away because of the tourist parking, so. I think it is enough, and I think this business will be a great addition to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other, anybody else wish to speak in favor? Please.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Joshua Welch, I, um, one part of Whale Eyes Cafe, and I just wanted to come up here to also extend my, uh, appreciation for, for this new business that's coming into, uh, our side of town. So I do, uh, definitely agree with approving the variance, and, uh, yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody on Zoom? One once, one twice? Okay. Uh, next up, testimony in opposition to the application. Please.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Stepp. Um, my name is Fran Recht, and I'm a citizen here in Depot Bay. And, um, I submitted a late testimony today, so I apologize. I am thrilled to see a new business coming into town, especially south of the bridge. What I'm not thrilled about is waiving, um, parking requirements. And, um, and of course, all criteria need to be met. Not one, not two, not three, but all four. And I find that this application, due to the fact that really wasn't what I consider due diligence on the finding parking within 500 feet of the property, the criteria is, um, the minimum necessary to alleviate a hardship. And maybe the applicant couldn't have found eight spaces. Maybe she could have found two spaces or four spaces. Thinking about the long-term growth and needs for Depot Bay, we can't waive parking requi, getting more parking on the south side of the bridge. And, um, Hippie Trip is, is, uh, one. So variances are very, have to be very specific to the facts of the matter at the time it was granted. I don't know what the research was for the 500 feet at the time, but what applies now is what the criteria is now. And, um, I called up, um, Jerome Brandt, who owns all his properties south um, of, um, where that new crystal shop is, and he said, "Nobody's approached me." I don't know what I'd say, "Nobody's approached me." To me, just depending on, you know, for sale signs, doesn't, doesn't, um, relate to whether maybe you could get a lease for, you know, parking for a few years. It doesn't relate to the willingness of a property owner has that vacant lot across the street from leasing or selling on a long-term basis. And, um, there was no outreach. Um, additionally, um, there was no evidence that that property of 6,400 south of the existing building doesn't have a little bit of space to provide, um, off-street parking or additional, um, parking in that, in that area. I looked at the topo map, unfortunately, the Highway 101 thing was over, but it does look like in the contours shown on some of the other, um, maps included when it was submitted by the applicant, it shows that not immediately south of the building, but a little bit further south than that, there is a widening of that, um, contour line, which seems to me that that is relatively flat land there. But the burden isn't on me to prove that that is flat land or not. The burden's on the applicant, not to just assert there's no, no, uh, space I can lease or rent. The applicant n- needs to say, how should determine that? She can't assert, "Oh, it's too steep, I can't place parking there." Um, I mean, this is just random, this 101. The, the burden is on the applicant, and I don't think the applicant has met that. And, um, yes, you can say, "Oh, the Hippie Trip didn't get parking, I don't know what the circumstances was," but, um, the Channel House, which also is incredibly constrained by the, um, the contours, I mean, the shape and size of the building, they did have to provide parking, and you can see the Channel House parking right on Highway 101 up there. So, um, so there's two criteria that I don't think are met. Um, I put one in the, um, in my report, applicant, um, is number D, which is, uh, 152.171D. The hardship is not self-imposed, and the variance requested is a minimum variance which alleviates the hardship. I don't think, um, there's, it can be made up binding that it's the minimum variance, which is zero. You know, providing zero parking. Minimum variance might be two, or, you know, might be four. Why is, why is it eight? Because you don't know if any of that properly within 500 feet is available. The other criteria is 152.171A. But again, the Channel House is, is a situation similar to the applicant's, where they did not have space. And in that case, they obviously could find something within 500 feet, and they purchased it and provided some parking. So it, that situation is a situation that applies, that's similar to the applicant, that applies to this, in the same zone, zone of vicinity. So, um, I think the variance should be denied at this point. We don't have the, um, documentation, we don't have anything other than assertions that the applicant's made, that that due diligence, um, shows that there is no parking within 500 feet. And, um, I think what could happen, um, is that the applicant could provide some more documentation of the availability or not by ta- talking to the owners of those, um, two properties and, or four, three properties, and documenting the actual contours of that land. And so I would urge you to deny the applicant the variance at this time, and you have 120 days. Um, the applicant could come back with more documentation and say, "Oh, I found a free space, I can lease this," or "I can rent before." So that's my suggestion, and, um, one, one thing that came to mind, because I heard a woman from the Hippie Trip say, "People don't know that it's public parking, so they don't park there." Well, instead of having no signs, every parking space, if you are going to purchase, should be signed "public parking." Um, or, their vicinity should be signed "public parking," so, um. And then I'm also concerned that, um, there will be parking for the applicant for her residence on the street at all times. And, um, I don't know what that, um, if ODOT allows, or we allow overnight parking on the street. And, um, there should be, you know, at least some provision for not having the applicant have a dedicated, essentially a dedicated parking space, a public parking space for the residents on the public right-of-way. Thank you. Um, I should say the questions are going.
Do you got any questions for Ms. Recht?
So, Fran, I think to some extent, south of the bridge has different, some different challenges than some of the other areas. And I wonder if that could be seen as, as some kind of hardship for them? You have any thoughts on that? You know, Channel House type of business too can affect their ability to procure private land.
Okay, I-
Like the Channel House, the Channel House
Yeah.
can afford to purchase private land for their business. So I just wonder if some of the challenges on south of the bridge are pertinent, if you think they're pertinent at all?
What criteria would you be referencing from the variance criteria?
Maybe a hardship that's not self-imposed?
Yeah, that's one of them, and I could say that the har, I agree, the hardship is not self-imposed. That's only one of the four criteria for granting variance. You have to find for all of them. Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions. So some of the properties that you used examples of in your, in your letter, um, like the one across the street,
Mm-hmm.
the one that has no parking signs all over that retaining wall,
Mm-hmm.
That, that's an example of the parking-
It's a private property?
Yeah, sure it is. The one next to it, there's a property right next to it that's, uh, I'm looking at the photo, it's, it's the one, uh, I, I think it's immediately south- I, I think it's immediately south of, there's like a red, a red and white truck, pickup truck parked on the street in front of the property. One that's covered completely in vegetation, that if uh, if the owner were to um reach out to that property owner, and which, I'm not sure who that property, I'm not sure if it's Mr. Grant or somebody else.
Faye.
Faye, okay. That's totally vegetated, and yeah, it'd take a lot of lock clearing and brading and everything. I wonder how much financial hardship it would cost on a small business to get two more parking spaces in the adjacent lot? I understand the criteria, I understand the, I understand the, the variance criteria, we've dealt with that a few times. But I mean, we're talking about a small business south of the bridge in a building that's been vacant for how long?
Yeah, I mean, I would like the business to go in. We don't know how much of a hardship it is, because there's been no evidence presented of any hardship.
I may have.
You're just speculating, and you can't do that. The burden is on the applicant.
I think the applicant would be able to rebut.
But it, you could, and you can rebut, but we don't know this. When surveyors go in, they can, they can look at this, or somebody can go in and say, what? Maybe that property owner of the days had a lot surveyed, what is the slope? Maybe it doesn't take much. Right next to the building, it is a drop-off, I know that. But I don't know, it's a pretty, it's probably, you know, 50s, I don't know, maybe it's more than that, probably 70, but with lot. I don't know how much of that is useful or not, but I don't know, because there's been no evidence presented one way or the other.
Well, one way or another, it either, you know, we approve the variance as-is, and we have a business in a long abandoned, or a long, sorry, vacant, unused building. And the other way, we deny it, and everything stays the same way it is right now. That's kind of the, to, I, I haven't made a decision yet fully, but I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to analyze how, how I understand that this is how we get, you know, parking, this is how we get sidewalks as, as, as properties develop. And largely, that's been done in my couple of years on this commission for reconstruction. You know, we make them build sidewalks, and you can dig, dig berms and swales and everything. But uh, this is an existing non-conformant building built in, I think it's in 1928 or something? Nobody was thinking about parking it that early, they're parking model Ts.
But um, when, when the applicant purchases a property, the 500 feet criteria has long been in place. So it's not like, it, that was not one of the things that was the change in code that the, the staff said, you know, it was confusing. That was not, that was, has been in place a long time. And so I'm not trying to be a hardass, what I'm saying though, is there is obligations when you purchase a property, to do due diligence. And um, and I suggested, you, you have 120 days, you could postpone the decision on the variance and have the applicant come back with documentation that the, that there is, has been an effort to find a rental property for a a, I mean, lease or a purchase, and maybe it is um unreasonable. But we don't know that. We don't know that, because there's no evidence in the record.
There's also an obligation for the city of Deepo Bay to, you know, en- encourage the growth of business in our zone commercial strip, which is right here, of course, and there's a, you know, that's what he said. We already got all your questions, but sorry, I'm done, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Did I cover yours for you?
No. Me guess goes.
All right. Um, Chris, sorry, do you have any, I almost forgot your answer, do you have any question? Okay, thank you. All right, would there, uh, would the applicant like to run your ball?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to sign it again?
Yeah, you do.
You?
No.
Anthony, sorry.
Yes, uh, I appreciate um the sentiment. I worked um very closely with Mr. Eckert to understand the requirements in great detail. I presented um him with everything he asked for, uh, including um clarification on if I needed to go and talk to every property owner within 500 feet, and I was told that I did not. I did check um on the availability of the space uh right across from me, and it is not available. I also um checked the grade, as you can see on the topo map, the grade of the building, of the, of the, um, sorry, the grade of the property directly south of me. Um, and in talking to ODOT, what I understand is they have uh 50 foot, well, it's 100 feet on both sides of the freeway, so 50 feet on each side, and after that 50 feet, there is no land available according to the topo map. So um, down to the Crystal Rock Shop, so um. So if, even if I purchased the land directly south of me, um, I would not be able to build in the ODOT um right-of-way, which is all of the available land. So what would need to happen if I did, if that land was available for sale, if the people wanted to sell it to me, if I had the money to buy it, um, then I would need to erect some kind of um concrete parking structure above the, above the bay, I guess, which seems excessively um difficult in terms of authority to me. So um, that's, that's there about, any questions?
Um, as, as Fran mentioned, we do have, the city does have 120 days to make our determination. Sorry.
The city is required to make a, a decision on the application within 120 days of to take, to be, be completed. And that includes resolution of all appeals, all local appeals, and that made a decision for us.
Okay, which would put us right about the end of the, uh, what about liberty of weekends? Okay. Any questions? Okay, is there? Any other testimony? You go ahead and zoom. I think we're there, okay. Is there anyone, uh, I will request, is there anyone, sorry, I'll ask, is there anyone who requests that the record remain open for final additional written testimony? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. With that, the public hearing will be closed. The commission will now go into deliberations, make a decision, or we'll be open for input from the public during deliberations. We did learn at our um, our last meeting, we had a gentleman from, I forget the DLC.
DLC, Department of Land Conservation.
Yep, we had uh one of our, our representatives uh do a training session for us, and we did learn that um if necessary to ask a question of the applicant or anything else, we can temporarily close deliberations, reopen the public hearing, go through that rigmarole, and then reclose. So we do have that ability. We are now in commission deliberations?
Yeah, four things.
That's got four things.
My guess is that the reason the parking is typically vacant now is because it's so far from anything that's worth going to. It's not, it's not an easy walk anywhere. And requiring customers to make two trips across 101 is ludicrous. Right, there's no crosswalk. There's just, there's just, that half of that 500-foot radius is just out of the way. Uh, specifically, that part of 101, because you've got just a change in speed limit, and people have them slowed down to 25 yet, people know they're supposed to, and going out, they're already sped up, so it's just not a good part of 101 to have to cross. My opinion is that C1 zoning rules were written for north of the bridge, and the real estate south of the bridge doesn't fit that situation. And my question is, if we were to strictly apply C1 zoning to that property along that strip of highway, we'd have 500 feet parking. Is that what we own? I don't think so. That, it, it's, it's sort of appropriate for small-town, city-front, streets-front businesses with on-street parking, like you see in most main streets.
So what, can I ask you, now, is the south of the bridge different than north of the bridge?
The terrain, there's no, there's no available land on the same level. I mean, you, you could put parking down below and front of the hill, you know, stairway or something like that, but that would be asking a lot from customers. I think south of that building that's there, any businesses that go in are gonna have to be fronted on the street below just because of the terrain. And, and to build something that's suspended or, or on piling, elevated, that's also earthquake resistant. It would be huge, and it wouldn't look good anyway. So I think we need to rethink the zoning in that area. I, maybe a C2 or something, that's got different rules. But right now, and right now though, until we have the variances, but I think I don't know that that's a reasonable requirement, given where those buildings were located along that hill, on that side of the highway. The uh, my other comment would be that the Channel House parking lot is like, so it's, I wouldn't favor that anyway.
It doesn't get used very often.
Well, it's also overnight parking, because those are hotel guests, so that's a whole different kind of parking. So it's not similar. I don't know, it was designed, you know, that building was built for on-street parking, or, you know, back in the day when it was supposed to be city streets, but most of downtown was designed with on-street parking. And we added the, the up-the-hill parking later than nobody knows about. Um, so it, it's, it, the main street feel would be off, you know, on-street parking, street front, uh, and that area is appropriate for that kind of thing, all right? So, yeah. That's my view.
Is that your four questions?
That would be my four points, yes.
Oh, wow.
Well, one of them was easy, the vacant, making sure, you know, why they're vacant all the time, yeah.
Any other commission deliberations?
Well, I have some, uh, question deliberations for the city planner, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you want me to ask them all at the same time, or you want me to?
How about one at a time?
Okay, so, okay, what, could you clarify, you mentioned it, Fran mentioned it, but could you clarify to me this, and I think the owner mentioned it, but I was confused, about this issue with the bogus codes? And then, who understood what A B?
Yes. I, I read this in the record in the previous public hearing, and I, I wrote it out fairly clearly, so I might just read to you from the chapter first, if that's okay.
Is this the, from this chapter?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And if you still have questions after that, please, please ask. Read, read it, from the bottom of page four.
I read it, but it didn't make sense to me.
Well, the zoning, okay, uh, the, the zoning ordinance is chapter 152 of the city's code ordinances. And the zoning ordinance was in 2022 qualified, meaning since the previous adopt, since adoption of the zoning ordinance, numerous ordinances have been adopted that were perfect, changes. And in 22, all those changes, those, those other ordinances, kind of anyway, were incorporated into the one document, rather than being separate documents. So it was intended to all be located in the, in that one code, section 152. Unfortunately, among the ordinances that got thrown into that 2022 edition was one that never got adopted by the city council. It had been contemplated, and it had been drafted, and somehow got its way to a consultant who was doing the qualification of the code. And they amended the code to incorporate these changes. They're all parking related changes into the code, even though they weren't in effect, they're not valid, and they're magic. So, for those particular sections, we have to refer back to the previous ordinance to get the, with appropriate language, it's actually in effect. So that's why we've been announced back and forth between the 2022 ordinance and 2011 zoning ordinance. And I attached ordinance 29, 279, and that's provided a specific language that was errantly added to our zoning code, and never should have gone yet. And that includes a difference for footage requirement, or parking space for, requirement for retail uses, to change that number from 200 to 350, when in fact, 200 is what's in effect and has been adopted by the by the city. Another change was the language that says you can use on-street parking against your parking partner. That shouldn't be in it, because it was contemplated, but it was never adopted. So the applicant read that. She says, at the time, I first seen property, and later was informed by the previous planner that no, that there is a variance. Another well, the, the provision for parking within 500 feet of the property. I'd like to clarify one thing about that. It's not a criterion, it's not a must, it's not a requirement. That neither, neither 2011 code nor the 2022 code require that that be fully best delivered. Not in so many words, at least. They, it says parking may, may be provided on an offer inside, within 500 feet. Has to be within 500 feet unless approved by the planning commission, which means people farther, how far really?
So why would the 500 feet report a variance?
Not necessarily, it just says approved by the planning commission, doesn't say through the variance process. But in any rate, it's not part of the city criteria for those variance, or any other action, now that the person talked to all property owners within 500 feet and determined whether there's, they can negotiate and say, I'll lease, so they can break your contract.
So that kind of leads into that other questions, I think, very, can I?
Yes, that's answering your question.
This concept that Fran brought up, which is, you know, perfectly dilate is um the due diligence documentation request. It sounds like you're saying that that's not part of the requirement.
The applicant has a burden of proof to meet, perhaps correct, every one of the decision criteria. And among those is demonstrating that this is the minimum variance that would alleviate a hardship. So that's open to interpretation by the planning commission, what's, what's that mean to me? But, but the assumption in the written testimony and, or testimony that the applicant is absolutely required to investigate all options within 500 feet is a, is mistaken assumption. And should I offer my response here? I, I did prepare a brief clarification uh after receiving the testimony this afternoon, if you'd like, I'd be happy to share it with you.
Yeah, I would, I have one last question.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So what about, are they um doing overnight parking for the city, or the, ODOT have a stipulation on overnight parking in public spaces, as far as you know?
No. Why not?
72 hours.
72 hours.
You have a same, you're on the ORS, like we are, 72 hours. If it's, they're parked on any spot, it's 72 hours, they could be towed for a bit, and then we'd have to call a sheriff. It's the same thing on our streets. But if it's like.
No one's getting into right now, right, you're about to hand, you're about to.
But I can, but.
Well, you can ask for the right.
Excuse me?
So are you going to?
Yeah, we're, we're in commission deliberations right now, stay there.
Do you want Chris?
Oh, Chris, I'm sorry.
So, if you'd like to, if, yeah, if it's important, maybe this.
Yeah.
Oh, so we're.
For anybody watching on Zoom, we're gonna be reading, because I don't think from a, you know, and.
Oh, um. Can you, uh, Commissioner Watkins? Oh, um, can you, uh, Commissioner Watkins, Carla's going to go scan it and email it to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Right. You may.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on, I gotta do this, do this.
You get to practice now.
Yeah, we're gonna decide better, better change. Um, I'm trying to do that. We're going to temporarily suspend commission deliberations and reopen the public hearing, all the prior language still applies.
So it is open, okay.
It is once again.
Um, this is kind of, um, upsetting to have this outside of the public hearing have information that I have no hook of. Um, he represents, the staff person represents, plan represents, that he was told in verbal communication that the applicant had contacted owners of the two vacant lots across the highway from the subject property. That was not part of the testimony from the applicant right now. And I don't even know if that's, um, actually, you know, an accurate statement because I didn't hear that from the applicant. And so that, I mean, having this alleged at this point is, um, kind of disturbing. And, um, and then referring to, you know, past applications that we can go read the, you know, the, the staff reports if you want to see them. But we didn't rely on them, but all throughout the staff reports depended on, you know, divvy trip in the situation there where, um, that it's contrary to what, what was said in the application, which was depending on, you know, oh, but they got the same thing. So, um, this is, and I can't think on my feet like this, it's just, um, the idea that nothing requires the applicant to investigate options for outside parking within five hundred feet. Well, the staff findings depend on not having parking within five hundred feet. So you can't have it both ways. You can't say as a part of the findings, for example, indeed, that, um, there's no, you know, there's, that, you know, there's no options within five hundred feet. And that actually hasn't been investigated. So, yeah, maybe there's no, there's no requirement for the applicant to investigate options. But then if they haven't investigated options, how can you make a finding that there's no, no parking within five hundred feet? It's, 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 uh, it's like a catch twenty-two here, so, um, thank you. Before you close, check out.
Yeah, we've got an opportunity for it all, absolutely. Would you care to speak to that?
Sure.
If you would like.
Hello, um, there are a series of, uh, many, many, I think nineteen emails between, uh, Mr. Ecker and I, that detail of the questions and requirements I asked when I'm looking for a property. I did look at the property across the street, I looked at the property beside me, um, I went to search for property and I walked my dog by every property within five hundred feet every single day. So I have been out, I've been looking, I've been looking, there, there's nothing available for, for me. So these searches that I have not been looking and are not my other departments, um, are, are inaccurate for me.
Thank you.
Can I ask, keep the record open for seven days?
You may.
Is there any more testimony?
Yes. Do we, do we have any more testimony while we're doing testimony? We'll do the record. You take this? Okay. Is there anyone who requests the record to be open?
I have a question.
Okay. Oh, so my interpretation of what you, how you explain the five hundred foot thing is that if the applicant comes in with off-site parking that is detached from the property, but within five hundred feet, that qualifies as meeting rule. It's not a requirement to do that. But if they have done that, then it's okay.
Right. Then they wouldn't need the variance.
Right, okay. Um, that clarifies things a lot.
Yeah.
Um.
Proceededly, uh, um, may I just explain what it means to leave the record open?
Please.
So, um, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments for testimony regarding the application. There are two ways to do that, continue the public hearing to a date certain or leave the record open. The request is to leave the record open for additional written evidence, arguments for testimony. Record should be left open for at least seven days. Any participant may file a written request with local government for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period that the record was left open. Um, that's pretty much it. We, we won't reconvene a public hearing. Right, well, you know, testimony that'll be taken and viewed. Yeah, and we will need to schedule coming back for more deliberations and decisions.
So I do have a question about this document.
Uh, the, which one?
Just that you gave us.
Oh, yes.
So how, I mean, I don't understand the rules about all this, but how does this added document at this time affect our record and the staff report and our ability to make a decision in the public, publicly?
There's no new information in this for one thing. This is all reiteration of what's in staff report. Uh, except, well, except for the conversation that occurred. And that new information was actually provided by the applicant in their verbal testimony twice temporary. So this is, other than that, clarification of what staff report is.
I mean, it, it's.
It's in the record.
The staff now is in the record, always.
It's in the record, it's part of the record.
It's not part of the staff report, it's part of the record.
Right, and the staff report was written essentially in a six final form.
Yeah.
This is in response to.
In my answer, we are telling you the rules of, of what is a conversation in the first years or all. It doesn't matter whether she's been around because it's not a requirement. So it might be new information, it doesn't matter, it doesn't change anything. And that's how I would interpret it.
I gotta come out for a second. Are we, with additional written testimony, can we continue with commission deliberations? It's a, I guess, a procedural question.
Probably should, uh. You can close, you close the public record, you got to close, close the public hearing, yes, and close the meeting. I think is, is a good, good point, procedurally, and then, uh, save your deliberations for next time.
That being the case, I'm gonna go ahead and reclose the public hearing. And with the record request to remain open for additional, for additional written testimony, we will have to resume this, uh, the, well, we'll get a date scheduled, I think, this, our next regular meeting, probably.
How far in advance is that going to be? I'm looking for this business owner to open their business.
Pardon me, we're, we're figuring out the.
We need to, we need to, minimum. What's twenty-one?
You just explained that it's a seven, there's a, you leave the record open, you get feedback for written, feedback for seven? You have seven days. Then it gets sent to the applicant who gets to, and others can provide their set, they have seven days to provide feedback. And then it goes back again, I believe, for rebuttal, one day you guys have your hair.
So it's twenty-one days, which would basically put us to the next regularly scheduled.
Yes, so that's what happens. But this is totally a citizen's right to do this.
To just pass the record open?
Yeah, yes.
But I mean, this is, we left open for at least seven days, and then we can close this one.
Well, no, it can be unclosed, but it's still a rebuttal process.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah, there's still always gonna be death.
Yeah.
Okay, that being said, the public hearing for this one is closed. It sounds like we'll probably have to reconvene this one at the next, most likely the next regularly scheduled meeting, actually, we, I think that would give everybody an appropriate amount of time, I think, right?
A better, a better saying, definitely. Better saying exactly what.
I don't know when that is.
July night.
July night. Thank you. July night, Wednesday, July night. Okay, that being said, we will move on to any unfinished business, which I don't believe there is any, perfect or wrong.
Are we having interest in this?
Any, any new business? None? Any public comments for items not on tonight's agenda?
All right, I'm too busy talking, boy. Um, I was just wondering about the status of what we call in calling life ordinances, the, um, tree ordinance, the lighting ordinance, the noise ordinances. I don't know, it doesn't seem like there's any, you know, on time and some action on that.
We had, we, we talked about that a, a meeting or two ago, we were wondering the same thing, and obviously we had some turnovers. I think those got put on the back burner by, by staff at the, for time being, especially during the potential busy season.
And the legislature going through that with all the rules that are coming down, we have to wait and see how that settles before we can see what we can do and not do.
I did do a lot of homework on that lighting ordinance one, and, uh, I'd love to revisit that at, maybe when things start.
I'm not sure that lighting is in practice, we probably can sort of.
That's where that's at, for going on. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none, going on, going twice. Okay. Uh, do we have any city council liaison reports? Anybody in front of me?
I hope it was the last meeting.
No.
Okay.
I want the last meeting, no.
Okay.
She keeps forgetting on the funding commission, so whenever I show up, she never, she never remembers. Hey, you got any information for themselves? No.
Fair enough.
And there's nothing that I would report back to this group either.
Sure.
So did you go to the, the city council meetings?
I went to the city council meeting, uh, I wrote the ordinance for the energy committee.
Okay.
So that's why I'm like, this is secondary.
Okay, would, did they discuss the fleet of flowers? At all?
The harbor came up, the meeting room was packed all due to the harbor, the fleet of flowers did not come up specifically. But the, the owner's group aren't happy.
With, yeah, with.
With the harbor or the city. It's sort of like, I must have got the problem, you know, the city council, my owner, it's gonna be a long term, a long time. And I'm not sure why, but.
Okay.
And it goes way back to current, has the current council.
Okay.
Long stay.
So it's not just the new doc?
It's not the new doc, no, they're, they're pretty happy with those and stuff, they're.
All right. Okay, do we have any city planner or city administrator reports?
I did provide before in the package, considering the questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Is it been busy?
Were you involved in a property line adjustment?
Who first? I, take, moving one or more property lines between you and your neighbor.
And both?
Or two properties, if you are.
Are both of the property line adjustments in your report adjacent properties, two sides of the same line or are they two different parts of town?
They're, they're both owned by the same, in, in each case, the two properties that are affected are owned by the same property owner.
Okay, and there's a line between two adjacent pieces of property? That's right, okay. That makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're super like partitions and subdivisions, I think.
Well, I just was curious what owner one that is.
What do you want?
The funding commission, is that on a roll now?
No, it's a staff decision. And yes, it's been busy, and it's giving out, giving out here.
Okay.
We will have items on the agenda for July, efficient published.
Ready?
So, and I have a question about the, I can't find it right now, my Dropbox, very. In your report.
Uh huh.
The complaints.
I've got a copy of it, if you want.
Okay, yeah, it was the complaints.
Six chairs. Six, oh, eight.
Yes, we do have your sheet, yeah.
Pretty much.
The six chairs.
This looks different than what I saw. There was a complaint about six oh five.
Oh, I gave you the wrong one, I'm sorry. Yeah, there.
Six oh five, highway one oh one?
Six oh five, oh, one, six oh seven, yes.
But it said six oh five, six oh five.
And then six oh five and six oh seven, in any rate.
Okay, so it says six oh five, and I think it says six oh five and six oh five, which is confusing.
Okay.
Might go with that. But what, is it on highway one oh one?
Yes.
Which is part of the coastal overlay zone and the area of visual concern?
Yes, it's.
Okay.
Chasing the back code, I X code.
Okay, that was just my confusion, just. And if I want to find it, it's six oh five and six oh seven, I.
At least, yeah.
Any other questions on city planner or administrator reports?
I have one bait, one just quick question. Um, I'm not sure where Harbor Light subdivision is.
It's just down the street from city hall, if you go down the.
The past.
Yeah, just.
That's what that's called, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to planning commission concerns, anybody want to go? No?
I think we talked about.
We ready to wrap it up? Chris, do you have any planning commission concerns?
I do not.
Okay. Jaws is your only concern. Okay, with that, we've finished up the agenda, we'll call this meeting, good night.
Good night, Chris.
Thank you.
Good night, Fran.